Excellent, so I'll call this meeting to order. We're now meeting as committee of the whole, November 21st. Is there any declaration of interest pecuniary or otherwise? See no hands. I would ask you to declare if one does come up during the course of the meeting. We have some item number three, some business arising from the minutes. And item three A, with respect to a notice by councillor Desai. I'm gonna, you want to move councillor Desai moves, put it on the floor, seconded by councillor McQueen. Councillor Desai, you have the floor.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I think it's important to always examine the environment that you're working within. If you get too comfortable in a particular environment, you risk getting stagnant. And this is what this notice motion is attempting to do. It is attempting to revisit the environment that we as a council operate within. And if there is anything that can be done to make it better in terms of representation, in terms of efficiency, and in terms of just simply how government works in Gray County. That is what the intent of the motion is. It is to get a report from staff. I have had lengthy conversations with members of staff with regards to this motion and the the intent of the motion, and I think it is timely because any decisions that that will eventually hopefully be made to make this a better system will be made by a different council perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers on the motion? Councillor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, I'd just like to ask the mover of the motion. Is there a particular problem that you're seeking a resolution to that you're looking for?
Councillor Desai?
Well, for starters, I would get rid of you, but besides that, I thank you for the question, councillor Mellon. It was a witty quip, and I guess Southgate wouldn't understand. No, there are no particular problems. I do personally have an issue with how representation happens at this table. I would like to see a change to that. I would like to see representation where a single person represents more than one municipality. But that again is my personal opinion, which I will bring forward when this report comes back to council. I think there needs to be a change to the, to how the members of this council are appointed or elected. In a nutshell, yes, I do see issues. I just don't think right now is the appropriate time to air those issues.
Councillor Soever?
Yes, and just a question to the clerk. So councillor Desai referred to that probably we wouldn't be able to get this done in time to make changes for this next election. And so I realized, what is the timeframe for making any changes or is it past already?
Deputy clerk?
In terms of making any changes to the, the way the warden is elected, probably weighted voting and direct versus indirect election, those would take likely council, a new council would want to look at those things quite early in a new term. I wouldn't say any farther than two years in. As for the structure of the internally, how we do our meetings, that could be done in a shorter timeframe. But something like that would still likely take at least, I would say, six months.
Sorry, councillor Soever?
Yes, thank you for that. And that's kind of what I was anticipating. So you know, this is pretty broad resolution and it says, staff, you know, write a report on all these issues, but without any guidance. And I think we're late in the term of this council to try to make changes. I mean, if people want to run on the basis that they want to make changes to the county structure, I guess that's, they'll get a mandate and maybe the new council will have a mandate to make changes. But to, to make changes now that, you know, like, I just think that, you know, there's going to be a lot of staff time consumed by this process. I mean, I, I have some ideas on, you know, some of these issues, particularly when it comes to voting for Warden. I'm uncomfortable with it being a secret ballot. I think everybody should stand up and be counted. And, you know, I know some people will say, well, yeah, but it might create hard feelings. But if that is the case, I think most people here are more mature than to harbor ill will because somebody voted one way or other for the Warden. And, you know, it's democracy. Sometimes you're on the winning side of a vote. Sometimes you're on the losing side. So, you know, I have some ideas, but I just think that bringing this forward now and tying up staff when it doesn't really provide any clarity to staff on where they should be going on these issues. I mean, you could write a thousand page treatise on governance at the county level and bring it to council. And the council says, well, we're not interested in looking at it right now. Sorry. So I'm going to be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to our deputy clerk and then to our CEO. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Sorry, I just wanted to add that the report that staff would be bringing forward, we could probably do in the first quarter of 2022. And it would be an information report just outlining what we have and maybe options that an incoming council could look at in the future. But it would be strictly for information and then council could take it from there.
Thank you, Madam CEO.
Thank you. And that's the point that I was going to make was that I have had some conversations with Clerk Morrison. And I do understand that this was meant to be, as I said, an educational and information report that would provide a roadmap for council for their information, should they wish to do something in the future. It would be useful information for an incoming council to have a recent document to refer to, should they wish to look at any of these matters.
Thank you, councillor Desai.
Thank you. I do. I do appreciate the concerns raised by councillors ever. And I did have similar questions and concerns. The rationale for me still bringing this forward, councillor Soever, though, is that it does, as the CEO said, create a more recent report with information for the next council. For any fans of Doctor Who, and this is me being a bit theatrical perhaps, but for any fans of Doctor Who, there's, there's a quote from it. "Great men are forged in fire. It's the privilege of lesser men to ignite the flame." So that's what I'm trying to do, light the flame.
Wow, poetic. Councillor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I see no problem in getting an information report to sort of look at. And I think, I'm trying to think of this term of council, if we had any reports come forward. I know there was a strat plan at the Beaver Valley Ski Club there when we did a strat plan. I think there was some discussion around meetings and how we, you know, structured that. And, and I know there's probably through the Madam CEO, there's probably, I think there's a number of reports. I know from the two previous terms being on here, there's has been reports. So I think it's probably fairly easy to sort of take those and maybe dust them off and stuff like that. But I don't see anything wrong with an information report that sort of maybe at least gives everybody a chance to look at the big picture. Is this council, you know, with some recommendations or just is that report to go forward into the next term? I don't, I don't see any issue around having an information report. So maybe there needs to be a little bit of tweaking in that notice of motion to say that. I don't know. Looking at the mover and the seconder, but, you know, myself, but I just, I just wonder if that's something that maybe the mover could consider. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm understanding the tweaking that you're suggesting. You'll need to push your microphone.
To bring back an overall governor's report, but it could say to bring back an information report on all that points that you're trying to at least have a conversation on. So it's more of an information, not since you're setting yourself up to something that's bigger, but it's more of a, because I think there's a lot of information already done. And maybe we could get some comments from the Madam CEO on that, but I know there's been reports in the past. You know, when it's on Warden, when it's meeting structure, you know, I mean, governance wise, was it last term or term before where two municipalities had their county councillor, councillor versus the deputy mayor? That got changed from, I think, the Blue Mountains and town of, or the city of Own Sound. So that goes back. So there is some data, there is some, some, some information out there. And I don't see any, any problem seeing that information coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm going to turn to you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Do we want to deal with that as simply a friendly amendment or do we need to formalize it? Okay, so. Very good. So simply changing the word governance to information. So it reads an overall information report. We all good with that? Any other speakers on this item? If not, then perhaps it's time to call the question. On the motion before us, it's slightly amended, meaning information instead of governance. All those in favor? I couldn't hear you, councillor McQueen. So to be clear, we're just changing the word governance to information as you had suggested. Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion? And all those opposed? We may have a tie, do we? Sorry, let me see again, all those in favor. I think it was. And all those opposed? That is a tie. I'm sorry, yes. So it passes councillor Mackie's, and he voted in favor. So it passes. Okay, we're on to item number four now. We have two delegations. The first one is from Lynn Logan. And she'll be speaking with respect to Phase Five cottages at Laura Bay draft approval extension. Ms. Logan, welcome to county council. I know that we have a slide presentation from you and it, for people watching, it is available online as well. And I would just ask you to push the button so that you can speak, okay? Yeah, it's a green button. We're good.
I'm changing slides. How do I do that?
I apologize. I'm just going to ask you to hold for a second. There are some technical difficulties. So we're going to take just a minute or two to sort those out. In the meantime, you can just hang tight. So Ms. Logan, it looks like we have things worked out now. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and members of our Gray County Council. My name is Lynn Logan, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of 15 homeowners who reside along Anchor's Way in Thornbury. Our homes sit adjacent to a section of new homes in the proposed Sherwood Homes Phase Five development. We have concerns about the Phase Five planning application outlined in the Gray County Staff Report, P D R C W 26 dash 21, that you will be asked to review and vote on today. The cottages of Laura Bay is a lovely community situated along the shores of Georgian Bay in Thornbury. Originally designed as an affordable adult lifestyle community for retirees, the plan to transform the Keepers Cove Trailer Park is gradually achieving its vision of home to 198 families. Draft plan approval for this development began in 2006 with the most recent request approved in 2017. When we moved into our homes along Anchor's Way in 2006 to 2017, the land behind ours was the same grade level from Anchor's Way back to the Pacific Ridge. In fact, our own mayor, Alar Soever, attested to this fact when he recalled as a child riding his bike to Keeper's Cove Candy Store that the land had been leveled for the past 60 years. During 2017 to 2018, the builder dumped soil from foundation digouts to the Phase Five lands behind our homes. This raised the property up to six feet in some areas. Consequently, when we experienced the heavy rains and fast runoff in the spring of 2018, the excessive water flooded down to the lowest area, which was our homes. We appreciate that the town of Blue Mountains' planning team intervened on our behalf and compelled the builder to install temporary swales to prevent further flooding. We always believed, though, that the land would eventually be brought back down to its original level. And we were confident that our planning department would ensure that when the construction of Phase Five started, the lower original grade would be first and foremost on the drainage plant. We fast forward now to the spring of 2021, when Sherwood Homes launched their Phase Five marketing materials. To our surprise, the plan introduced nine homes with three-level walkout basements at a higher grade level on lots 33 to 41. These are the lots adjoining our backyards. This slide shows that there are eight homes adjacent to the new lots. And the owners have always known and accept that houses will be built behind us. However, this new design and higher grade does not represent the vision offered by Reed's Heritage Homes six years ago when we negotiated the purchase of our homes. This slide is a rendition of the plan that we all bought into. On page 52 of today's staff report, the town, county, and builder indicate that they have known since 2008 that the proposed design was never intended to be at the same elevation as Anchor's Way, therefore facilitating the need for the walkouts. We have testimony from all of the original homeowners on Anchor's Way that we were not informed of these plans at the time of negotiating our purchase agreements during the years of 2015 to 2017. In fact, we were all told that the houses behind ours would be the same with the same yards, which was a setback 20 feet. In March of 2021, we attempted to get access to Phase Five planning documents and were refuted with a claim that legal counsel had advised that past or legacy planning agreements and their drawings would not be posted on the website. We believe this is in conflict of the Planning Act, which states that it is an important part of the planning process to keep residents informed of what's going on in our communities. It was not until after our deputation to the town of Blue Mountain on June 29th that planning staff responded with access to information. This image is from the Town of the Blue Mountain Staff Report, P D S 21, 110, 120, follow-up report, rewalkout basements and drainage and cottages at Laura Bay. As you can see, the Sherwood Homes grading plant deviates substantially from the natural and original grade by upwards of three meters. In this slide, the contrast is self-evident as you compare the vision presented at the time of purchase in 2016 at the top versus the proposal seeking approval at the county level today at the bottom. We have in our possession, design documents obtained prior to purchase, which show only homes with subgrade basements. There was never any suggestion of an option for a three-level walkout basement. Today's request for extension includes an acceptance of the grade change, which has led to a new design with a walkout basement at a premium cost of $30,000 for home buyers. In addition to the higher grade of almost eight feet, the new homes will have a setback of only 3.9 meters or just 13 feet. Certainly a far cry from the 20 feet that we were told at the time of purchase. The structure's reduced distance from the rear property line serves to intensify the added height of a 35-foot structure towering so close to our homes. Which leads us to this slide. This, yet another piece of information that was not disclosed at the time of purchase was that we would be looking out and up to a house at least 34 feet in height. This slide prepared by Sherwood Homes shows the height of the modified design without walkout basement. If this plan for the nine homes proceeds, the new structures will function like a 35-foot wall blocking our sunlight and creating a dark dismal and tunnel-like feel. This slide illustrates our homes on the left and the Phase Five property on the right. The first row of the orange stakes mark the location of the back wall of the new houses. When the final grade to the right is raised, it will almost be three meters higher than our backyards. Had there been greater transparency at the time of the purchase, all seven of the remaining homeowners agree that we would not have proceeded with the purchase of our homes. We believe that Reed Sherwood Homes has deceived our residents through omission. Furthermore, in reference to page 51 of the staff report, two of the benefits cited are achieved at the expense of existing residents. The height of the proposed retaining wall is reduced to two meters from 2.7 meters. And the amount of fill that needs to be removed from the site is also reduced. Both of these have led to the higher grade. Now, I wanted to show you a landscaping drawing. I didn't get it in the presentation, but Kevin Fergan. Kevin Fergan is the vice president, and he wrote in a letter along with this landscaping drawing that, let me back up. The builder agreed to undertake the design and installation of a landscaping buffer or living screen. We appreciate the gesture. However, the proposal is not realistic. Kevin Fergan's letter, he states, "We have confirmed with city engineering staff that the orientation of the proposed plantings will not impede the rear yard swale and allow for perpetual access and maintenance of the swale. Given that there is a 3.9-meter setback offered on lots 33 to 41, this undertaking just isn't possible. We plan, with a planned two-meter swale, the plantings will have to be placed in a space of 1.9 meters. The greenery suggested covers a two-to-five meter spread. The proposed life screen cannot fit. The plants are just too shallow for plants, a deck, or any living space. Ultimately, the math just doesn't add up." At this point, we need to address the elephant in the room. In 2010, the town and county approved a site-specific zoning bylaw for Reed's Heritage Homes. Their standards for the R13 original zoning bylaw include a six-meter setback and two-story height variance. There is no reference to walkout basements in the entire zoning bylaw document. This is an oversight that needs to be rectified. Further to this, the six-meter setback was amended for this builder to three meters. We have discovered in our research that the smaller setback in condominium communities usually coincides with a plan of additional space for a shared buffer or common element between the homes. A three-meter setback with no buffer is unprecedented. I want to draw your attention here now to two photos demonstrating the contrast between a shared outdoor common element versus the back-to-back version that Sherwood Homes is attempting to get approval for today. It may interest you to know that both photos are of the cottages of Laura Bay. The photo on the top left illustrates a shared common area in Phase One. And the bottom right, the cramped backyard is currently under construction in Phase Four. It's unfortunate that Reed's Heritage Sherwood Homes have lost sight of focusing on green open space corridors. And we believe the new concept in Phases Four and Five is a degradation of the original cottages' community design. I want you to take a moment to absorb this. This photo sums up everything that is wrong with this planning application extension. It is an example of poor planning and corporate contempt for our community. The home under construction is on the perimeter of Phase Four. The owners of the Phase Three home were not made aware at the time of purchase of the close proximity of the new home. If they had known, they too would not have agreed to the purchase of their home. Now, this house behind them is, is, does not have a walkout basement. So the ones behind us will have a full walkout basement. Then the main level will be 10-foot ceiling. On top of that, you'll have your loft, and then you're going to have your peaked ceiling. So we're going to walk out and we're going to look up and we'll have, it'll, it'll be like a wall. The Town of the Blue Mountains official plan states that developers must maintain compatibility and where necessary, enhance the character, character and identity of existing residential areas. With this in mind, may I present a petition from our residents of the cottages of Laura Bay. Petition reads, "We, the residents of the cottages of Laura Bay, request that the Gray County Council reject the appeal by Sherwood Homes for the extension of the plan condominium for Phase Five of the cottages of Laura Bay. And we stand in support of the deputation by Lynn Logan for the same. We believe the current plan presented to council today significantly abandons the original cottages of Laura Bay concept as it deviates substantially from the natural grade, does not embody the original concept of green open space corridors, departs drastically from the original housing designs to a three-level walkout basement, and significantly impacts the value and enjoyment of our homes. We respectfully ask that the planning application extension not be granted until the following conditions can be met. One, a requirement to incorporate a minimum three-meter buffer or common element beyond the allotted three-meter setback on the lots adjacent to the homes on Anchor's Way. And a stipulation that ensures the grading plan reverts to the original and natural lower level of approximately 188 meters, thus eliminating the need for those three-level walkout basements and replacing these homes with the original and promised subgrade basement designs. Our petition has the support of 103 residents. And I'll present that to you. In closing, our community enjoys all that the cottages of Laura Bay and surrounding neighborhood have to offer. However, once shovels are in the ground, there is no turning back. Please consider the long-term effects of proceeding with a plan that offers no sense of privacy and a darkened corridor. This will be a permanent blemish on our municipalities' planning and development record. On behalf of the neighbors of Phase Five, I want to thank you for receiving this presentation. And I look forward, we look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Logan, for your presentation today. Councillor, are there any questions for Ms. Logan? Councillor Soever?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Logan. The, you referred to my comments with the original land was flat, and it was. However, since that time, I've looked at the 2008 grading plan, and I'd like to refer to your slide. Of what was sold to you. So it shows both houses being at the same elevation. Yeah, and then later on, there's a slide where you say that the new grade height here is 190.98, which is 2.38 meters higher. Now, and then there's a lot been said about what was promised to you. But I, I know planning staff and myself have tried to get that information of what was promised in drawings. The only drawings that I was able to find after some considerable investigation with the planning staff where it's the 2008 grading plan, where it actually shows the the elevation of the, the new street between 190.27 and 191.42. So very similar, and it's called the new grade height here. So clearly that has been in the approved documents since 2008. So is there any evidence available as to the fact that you were promised these houses would be at the same elevation? Elevation as your homes as shown on the slide?
Ms. Logan?
Yes, thank you. Um, I can't speak to what was in file. At planning until this spring when we finally got access to documents. So here's our issue. Is we were, we moved in and that land behind us was flat. We didn't know anything about a plan. And so that land, all along, we were told. That's what we're going to have, the same kind of development behind us. All of us had the same story. Not one person said, oh, by the way, you're going to have a higher grade behind you. By the way, you're going to have a three-level walkout basement that's going to be twelve feet from your backyard. Believe me, if any one of us was told any of those things, we would have said, nope, we're not doing it. So the issue comes. That the builder has an obligation to disclose. They knew that, the town knew that. But they failed to share that information with potential buyers. So that's our issue.
Yes, and, and I can appreciate that. I, you know, it's legally is the town, though. We, we have approved a plan that was always two meters higher. Behind your homes and obviously there has to be a bit of a slope because. At some point, you know, water needs to flow downhill and the water here flows downhill toward the lake and. Unfortunately, this, this home is, these, these new homes are behind you, so. Somehow the land has to be sloped so that the water will flow. Um, now. If you, you know, what, whatever the builder promised and, and you know, I would really like. To know that the builder promised something that wasn't approved, uh, because certainly we would view that. Very, very harshly, um, because, you know, the, the approved plan said the land is slow. Now, since two oh eight, the plan's been modified slightly. But the elevations really haven't changed by more than about, uh, you know, thirty centimeters here or there. And that, those improvements were made to, uh, catch more of the water. Before it got to your property. So right now, the water comes down the hill. There's a swale, then there's the road, the new road, which is gonna act as overflow for the water. And then it's gotta go over a little, another little hump to get. So basically, the amount of water flowing through your home is going to come from a much smaller area. But, you know, I do understand your concern that, you know, you, you didn't get good disclosure. And hopefully, you know, uh, I know I've been asking planning staff, well, have they not been able to? Get some examples of that disclosure so we could demonstrate that the builder, um. Was promising something that they weren't approved for, because. You know, from day one that, you know, the land has been sloped, so. So I want to thank you for that and certainly if you can provide any material to show that. Um, you know, the builder was promising things they weren't approved to do. Um, you know, we'd be certainly happy to look at that as the town.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. Um, I don't see any other hands. So with that said, I'll thank you, Ms. Logan, for your presentation. We'll be turning next to second, uh, delegates, but I think we need to take a short break. It's now twenty two past. Oh, my apologies, Council McQueen, did I skip you?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just can you go back to the slide where I see there's behind where the construction is where there's the trees? There's a, like, it looks like there's trees behind. No, um, no, it was, it was where there was dirt piled up and there was. Yeah, there. So not knowing, not physically being there, but where those trees are. And basically, the base of those trees are the base of those trees higher than the backyard of those homes that are built?
Um, yes, so to address, um, Mary Soevers' comment about a natural slope. Yes, there was a very slight slope that goes up to those trees. And, uh, what they've done since. Is they pulled a lot of dirt around and then they're going to bring it all back in to bring it back up to three meters. But remember, those three meters were not there when we bought our homes. When we walked the, uh, community. And for us to do due diligence at the town to get documents, they were not available for viewing, so. We're not pleased.
Council McQueen?
Thank you for that. Can you go back to the other map that sort of shows the layout of the subdivision? Okay, so. In relationship, the relationship to where that arrow is, so those one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven squares there, am I reading that right? Is that the homes that are going to be built? So is your trees planned to be removed or where am I? I'm just looking at where are those trees? Where is that relationship to those trees to that map? Can you help me out there?
So the, um, where the red dots are, those are the new homes. Where the buff colored homes, there's eight homes there. Um, on Schooner's Lane, you'll see then there's a row of houses that back onto the Nippecene Ridge. That's the trees that you're talking about. Does that clarify? Can I go big? I can't. I'll, I'll put my glasses on and maybe I'll tell you the lot numbers. Yes, yes, that's it. Sir.
Thank you. So then the, the trees that are there are, are between the development and the golf course, is that correct? Okay, so the new develop, I see. Okay, so then you're currently where the arrow is now, is that right? Oh, okay. Okay, so it's that new street to be developed with, uh, homes on both sides of that new street and then it's all there with the trees. Okay, thank you very much for that, understand.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Logan, we're gonna take a break. Uh, we'll come back at eleven thirty one. Yes, thank you. Yeah, we're waiting for a quorum. Okay, looks like we have quorum. So our second delegation, are you, Mr., is it Yukivi?
That's correct.
Okay. And are there others besides yourself or you're representing all of the names that I see after that? Excellent. So you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Steve, members of council. I am here, my name is Rival Yukivi. I am here on behalf of Reed's Heritage Homes and Sherwood Homes. To respond to, uh, or to, to. Request, uh, uh, the extension of the draft plan of subdivision approval. As well as to respond to the delegation that you just heard before me. Thank you for the opportunity to provide these comments to you today. I'm joined here, just so you're aware, with Kevin Fergan, who is the vice president of development of Reed's Heritage Homes. As, uh, as well as Christine, uh, sorry, uh, Kristen Rennie from Georgian Planning Solutions. With whom I'm sure many of you are familiar. They're here in the event that any technical questions come up about the actual application. Our client, uh, as I said, is here to request the extension of the draft plan approval. I wanted to thank staff for all of their hard work that they've put into this matter, both at the town of the Blue Mountains and here at the county. Working through details and helping get the facts before county council. Uh, so that the decision can be made today. One of the things that I wanted to point out is given the lateness of this, it, it delay is not an option. We, we need the draft plan extension as, as of today because, uh, failing that, it will put all of the work that's gone into phase five. So far, which includes the installation and continued installation of services in jeopardy. The situation is unprecedented in many ways. In the sense that we have a fully legally compliant subdivision. That is currently in its fifth phase of development. There are, there, there are no underlying planning instruments that have been changed. In the sense that none of the zoning has changed, none of the official plans have changed that are applicable to the site, the subdivision is still as contemplated. Yet. The plan was not the, the rec, the, the, sorry, the, uh, council at the town of Blue Mountains decided in a split decision. Not to recommend against the county extending this plan. Me and my colleagues, I've discussed this with lawyers, the planning bar. Have never been involved in such an application, one where the outcome is straightforward, good planning. Yet, the local council splits and we end up here with a difficulty getting an extension. The project, like I said, is in phase five of a multi-year development. It's been ongoing since two thousand and six. Forty-three of the current fifty-six units in phase five have been sold. Site works are well underway and in fact, we're hopeful that regardless of the outcome today, phase five itself will be registered by the time. This plan lapses, that's how close we are and it may just be a registry office problem that results in a lapse of the plan. In framing the request, it's important to appreciate that there are no requested changes to the zoning bylaw. There are no requested changes to any of the planning instruments that are before council. There has been no change in the law, the regulations. Um, the subdivision, as I noted, as noticed during the staff report. Was never intended to be at the same elevation as. The lots behind it. There is a slope, a natural slope that runs from the Laura Bay Golf Course from the tree line through to the, the subdivision. The current design proposed is actually an improvement. It has twice the stormwater capacity than the previous two thousand and eight design without changing any of the proposed elevations. If any of you are aware of some of the problems that have happened at the Laura Bay Golf Course or through that system, there were some flooding problems going through there due to the nature of the road design. And so the major changes that you've seen in this application are an improvement to the stormwater flows. That's the only significant change here. When we're talking about the elevations, the staff report, I didn't want to recreate any of the work the staff had done, but the staff shows the elevations of the houses. Some of them are slightly higher, some of them are slightly lower, but on average, they're pretty much the same. The current proposal reduces the need for fill removal that was otherwise going to occur. Um, I, 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 I want to, uh, address the issue of fill at this moment in time. There was never fill brought into the site. The grades were not changed as was suggested in the deputation that you heard before. That is just, it's, it's patently incorrect. It is, it's difficult to listen to because the only thing that occurred on that site was some drainage ditches were dug in. In order to provide temporary relief from the stormwater problems that were on site. That's the only works that occurred that had any effect of creating some disturbance on the site behind the property. Everything that has gone into this design is there to make this plan function at the highest possible level. And really, the only things that have occurred since are tweaks to this plan. And all of that was done in order to address concerns that were raised by town staff with respect to stormwater. Ultimately. Stormwater can obviously be resolved in huge problems and huge issues, but if you deal with them upfront, nobody ever, nobody's ever aware of them and nobody ever complains about them. And that's what this design is intended to do. Now, I want to deal directly with a response to some of the comments that you heard in the delegation that preceded me. I want to note that we're faced with an unfortunate situation here. Uh, one where there's a recount of history that has not been accurately portrayed. There's a suggestion that the residents were sold something. A vision, as they call it in their deput- deputation this morning. Of a different development. Stripped away and at its core, when you look at what they're speaking about. The primary complaint of the residents is with respect to zoning approvals. They deal with heights setbacks, all those things which county council should be aware. And I expect being such experts in planning that you can't change those things to a plan of subdivision. They are related to things that were addressed in two thousand and six approved and now what we're seeing is the development of that plan through the course of time. It's unfortunately necessary to correct the record. Because the representations made here today about what Reed's has said and done are. Respectfully made up of whole cloth. It's because they were, they're not true. There is a reason why representations, the, uh, there, 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 there's a reason why none of the representations that you heard about. Today are in writing. It's because they, they were never made. There's also a reason why in law, when you're making representations with respect to land. Those representations are required to be in writing. It's called the statute of frauds. It's because these things happen when people get upset about land, they want to start enforcing rights that they don't have. Reed's never made the representations to the homeowners that in any way were fairly represented in the presentation that you heard. The reason I'm raising this with you is because the presented, presentation was designed to attack the credibility of Reed's. And in many ways has, has caused problems with, between Reed's and the town in order to defend its reputation. Reed's has done nothing except try to meet with and accommodate homeowners living in the situation as a reputable developer would do. As I said, there was no grades changed, no fill has been brought in. And when, when, when the deputy was challenged about. What it was that was represented, it actually, in her presentation materials, it says that was a vision that was represented to them. In fact, what her answer was, was. No, that's what, it, it's because they didn't give us the full information. They just kind of apparently filled in the blanks, so the, the story changed even a little bit there. That's what we've been dealing with. And please note that the images prepared by the homeowner and the presentation package are prepared by the homeowner. The vision that is prepared is not something that was prepared by Reed's and was never provided. To any of the residents. And Reed's never prepared or promised anything that was represented and in fact, they always understood from two thousand and eight onwards when. Whereas from the date that the staff has, has, uh, uh, provided information about it. That there would be a, a change in elevation that would either involve lookouts or walkouts. And if you want to get a good sense of the change in grade that exists, I just remind you of the, the picture that, uh, uh, Council McQueen took the deputy from before. That brings the difference from the tree line down to the houses. It is a change in grade. Reed's has stood by its subdivision plan. And has worked with staff to make it better as a developer, uh, two through the planning process. For this, I'll note that in the council package that you have, a staff rendering that was helpfully prepared. That shows the difference in elevations that was originally proposed. And the subdivision after some of the changes were made to reflect that occurred. I can't remember what page it's on. I can pull it up for you, but, um. It's on page fifty-two of the council package. It looks something like this. And it shows that that's the elevation drawing that I'm referring to when I say that it shows that some of the elevations went up, some of them went down, but there isn't a significant difference in any circumstance. But it certainly does not involve a wholesale change as was represented to you here today. Ultimately, we ask that you grant the extension for the plan of subdivision. The residential opposition is best, is not based in sound planning. It's, it's based in an attempt to, I. I redo redo the original zoning that was passed in two thousand and six. By granting the extension, you'll be ensuring that housing, which is already in short supply, all across the province of Ontario. Especially in this kind of a price bracket. Will not be exacerbated and jobs will be maintained in the county. Subject to any questions of council, those are my my submissions to this council.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, councillor, are there any questions? Not see any hands, and so with with that said, I will thank you, Mr. Yuki. All right, council, we are now on to item number five, we're looking at the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda? Else whatsoever, let's let me turn it off.
Mister Warden, I I'd like six A to be both, that's the capital purchase.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I'm looking for a mover now to approve the consent agenda as amended. Moved by councillor Woodbury, uh, seconded by councillor Hutchison. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, thank you. Okay, so now we are going to uh, number seven on your agenda, seven A. Is the cottages at Laura Bay draft plan extension, I don't know if it's Scott or Randy or both. Looks like Scott is coming before us, I need a mover to put this item on the floor. Uh, moved by councillor Columbus and seconded by. Also Woodbury. Scott, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Warden Hex and members of Committee of the Whole, I am just going to pull up our presentation here and we should be good to get going. Oh, sorry, it was already open. All right, my apologies for the delay there, um, so I will say I prepared this presentation uh, in advance of obviously hearing exactly what our our deputations uh, spoke about today. So there are some slides I'll I'll skip over where uh, it's ground that's already been adequately covered. Okay, which happened for you is the subject lands, you can see just in in terms of context, uh, the lands uh, highlighted in red there are the cottages of Laura Bay Lands. Uh, this air photo was taken in in the year twenty twenty, uh, so you can see uh, um. Up along Anchor's Way, uh, these are some of the areas we've been speaking about today. Uh, and and areas over here are largely already constructed and the proposed phase five, which we've been hearing about here this morning. Uh, would be roughly along here and uh, and just along the edge of the red there is roughly that tree line that councillor McQueen uh, took us to. And then beyond that, you see the existing waterfront development as well as the golf courts in that regard. So what we have before us is is an existing draft approval to a vacant land plan condominium. And now the existing draft approval was done in the year two thousand and six, I wasn't the planner on the file, uh, but I was here at the time. Um, there were some changes made over time to that draft plan approval, uh, most notably, there were some some changes made in in two thousand and seventeen. Um, but I would direct council's attention to the fact that the changes made in two thousand and seventeen were largely in in this section of the development. Uh, not necessarily over in in this section here that we've uh, we've heard about here today. Um, the original two thousand and six approval was for two hundred and twelve residential units, uh, most recently, the approval in in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, reduced that to a hundred and ninety-four residential units and and there were some rezoning done at that time as well. Uh, there was a public process, of course, involved with the original condominium approval and the zoning. And there was a further public process involved with the uh, with the red line revision in in two thousand and seventeen, and that would have necessitated. A report back to uh, to this committee, the whole who would have approved those changes back in two thousand and seventeen. As noted, I think by by our our deputants, that phases one to four of the development are either constructed. And or registered and and in the construction phase, and as we heard from our last deputation. Uh, forty-three of the proposed fifty-six units in phase five are already pre-sold. Uh, based on on the length of time this draft approval has ensued and the changes to it, uh, there have been some extensions made to the approval. Most recently, there was a three-year draft plan extension which was supported by both the town and the county in June of two thousand and eighteen, which brought the uh, the lap state up to October twenty twenty-one. Uh, and then there was an emergency uh, extension granted by county staff in September of this year. Uh, to facilitate these future reports and uh, and discussions at both the town and the county levels. Uh, so as we stand today, the current lap state for this this uh, development is December twelfth, twenty twenty-one. So what you have before you is is the uh, the phasing plan of this development. Uh, so so the dark gray areas that you see there are phases one and one B. Uh, as well as the purple and the blue are phases uh, three and four, and those areas are the ones that are already registered and in many cases built or partially built. Um, it's these green areas here, the green area here, sorry, that represents phase five. And and this kind of beige area that would be the future phase, and as we've heard about from our deputations. Uh, the area that seems to be generating the the most conflict at the moment, uh, is that that boundary line, if you will, between the the green and the gray. And so, um, we we have heard a number of public concerns with respect to to this uh, proposed extension, and and that would be atypical. Because normally speaking, a a uh, uh, an extension of draft plan approval uh, does not go back out for public. Public content or public comment, sorry, as they're usually just extending what they already have. In this case, there were deputations made to the town of Blue Mountains as similar to our deputation here today. Uh, that raise concerns ranging from the height and and the zoning and setbacks, uh, to land use compatibility, flooding matters. Uh, we heard comments about the lack of green space, comments about the parking in the development, impact on property values. Uh, questions about representations that were made, as well as questions about the public process, um, and and the planning elements in that regard. Um, with respect to this, it's it's important to for for the committee of the whole to understand. Um, how we got here today, and and normally speaking, the extension of a draft plan approval is a staff delegated authority. Uh, but it's only a staff delegated authority where there is support from the host municipality. So in a in in a normal set of circumstances, um, the the developer would come to the county and the municipality and say, hey, listen, can I have a draft on extension? They would submit their justification for why that uh, graph on extension needs to be considered, it would first be considered by by uh, the host municipal staff, in this case, town staff. And based on on uh, the the delegation of duties at the town, this needed to go back to town council in that regard. And then if town staff and or council in that regard, uh, supported it, it would come back to county staff and and that would be a delegated decision of uh. Of the director of planning, so so Randy shirts are in this in this instance. In this case, the the matter went before town council and wasn't supported, staff recommended support and staff also recommended. Uh, some updated draft plan conditions, um, but the town council did not support. Uh, following that, uh, that Randy did approve an emergency extension, as I noted. Um, to to allow us the ability to to have these discussions here today and have further discussions at the town. And those emergency extensions don't require the approval of of town staff and council in that regard. I will say with respect to the the draft plan conditions that town staff have put forward and uh, and that are being echoed in in our own county staff report. Uh, there are some conditions that uh, that they've recommended to update, uh, more so as a procedural thing, um, conditions that uh. That we didn't put in as a standard element back in two thousand and six, or even when we updated the draft approval in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, things like uh, wording around the servicing capacity and wording around the fact that just because you buy into a development of this. You're not necessarily guaranteed to have a spot in the school for for your children, if you have children of school age. Um, as well, they've put in some changes to the draft, recommended some changes to the background conditions. To try to address some of the concerns we heard today and and to try to further uh, encourage those uh, those um. Conversations between town staff, uh, the developer and and the residents in this regard. Uh, there's also a draft plan condition that I'll take you to in just a second, uh, that looks uh, to to establishing a a buffer or a living screen. As as uh, as Lynn put it, uh, between those those phase one and phase five units, so between that gray and green. If you will, on that map that I I just showed you. And so in this case, because there wasn't support from town council, and because we're looking at changes to the draft plan conditions. Uh, this matter is back before the the county committee of the whole for for their consideration. And so what you have here, um, is is a diagram showing the proposed living screen, if you will. So at the the top end of your screen, they'll you'll see that the beige colors, uh, those are the existing homes on Anchor's Way. Uh, and and the blue, what you see there is is sort of the building envelopes that would be in phase five. Uh, they would front on Schooner's Lane, but they would back on to um, those existing homes on Anchor's Way. And so what the developer has proposed in in relation to the concerns raised by by existing homeowners. Um, is some screening there with with various types of of um, um, coniferous and deciduous trees. And I should note, and and the developers noted, stuff to see in that little uh, uh, matrix at the bottom. These aren't seedlings or saplings that are being planted, um, these are 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 more mature trees in that regard, ranging in height. On the uh, coniferous level between uh, two hundred and fifty uh, millimeters and and uh, and and two, or sorry, centimeters. And uh, two hundred centimeters, my apologies there. And so that would provide a bit of a buffer between uh, the existing homes and and the new homes that are proposed in in uh, in number five there. Um, these are the the um, drawings that were were included in the staff report and and I took these directly from. Uh, one of the town staff reports, so I didn't prepare these myself. Uh, but what you see in in both the top and the bottom, on the left-hand side of your screen, uh, would be the existing homes in in phase one. And what you see on the right-hand side in red would be the heights, um, proposed based on the the two thousand and eight. Um, uh, elevations and in black, you see the ones proposed based on the two thousand and twenty-one. And and as we heard about, there is a slight difference in the grading, um, but in in staff's opinion, not significant in that regard. And so in in the top one, you will see that, yep, definitely, the the homes in two thousand and twenty-one are slightly higher. And in the bottom one, you'll see actually the homes in in two thousand and eight were slightly higher. And and so with respect to this, um, county staff in in formulating our opinion today. Have relied heavily upon the the detailed work that the town development engineering staff did in this regard. Uh, one of the previous concerns that we heard mentioned was with with respect to the drainage and the stormwater. And uh, it's it's the town's development engineering staff's opinion, um, that this new design. Uh, would 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 be better in that regard and would better prepare this development. Uh, for future changes in in uh, in climate and and heavier storm events in that regard. Um, they've further noted that the town doesn't have the ability um, to to prohibit walkout basements. Uh, as we've heard from our second delegation, the zoning is already in place there, and they're not proposing any changes to the zoning in this regard. And so should this be approved, if a uh, developer were to come into the town with a with a um, building permit. Um, the the town building official has to consider the Ontario Building Code and applicable law in that regard. And if it meets with applicable law, including the zoning, uh, they would be uh, compelled to issue the building permit in that regard. The one further thing I'd point out here.
Let's go ahead, councillor decide. Okay, continue, Scott. Sorry, Scott, you're gonna have to push your button again.
It's good now, okay, excellent, sorry about that. The other thing I'd point out with respect to uh, the the bottom of the slide, um, and as we heard from our our second delegation here today. Uh, the developer is very close to to registering um, phase five of this development, uh, within the existing timeframe. Um, we hear, we understand from town staff that the development agreement has recently been been signed, uh, by by the mayor and the clerk in this regard. And that, um, the final plans coming for for county approval will be submitted. Uh, possibly as early as next week, including a clearance from the town in that regard. We do already have clearances from the Gray Sobal Conservation Authority, who is another key body that we would turn to when we're we're talking about. Uh, drainage and and stormwater in this respect. I should note that the um, the development agreement that's been uh, before the town, uh, does include these conditions. Uh, that staff are recommending here today, uh, including the living screen buffer that we just saw on the the previous slides here. And so with respect to an an extension or draft plan approval, there is a very specific section in the county official plan. Uh, that outlines some criteria that county staff must consider before, um. Uh, considering an extension to the draft on approval, and and in this case, it would be county committee, the whole that would be considering these criteria. Uh, the the developers planner, Ms. Rennie, who's uh, sitting behind me here, has submitted a a justification memo on how those criteria have been addressed. And the memo that she submitted is is certainly consistent, uh, with what staff have considered in other cases, uh, when extending draft plan approval. So in this case, uh, county staff would suggest that the planning justification, uh, is adequate for for what they're attempting to do. Um, as staff have, uh, in response to some of the neighbors' comments, staff have gone back and and looked at the previous planning act approvals. And are satisfied that the appropriate notification and public process took place on those approvals. Uh, whether it be the existing two thousand and six approval, or or the, sorry, the original two thousand and six approval. Uh, or even the two thousand and seventeen, uh, red line revision and rezoning that happened at that time. So in that respect, staff are satisfied that the belt, including the revised conditions of of draft approval. As regard for matters of provincial interest in the Planning Act, it's consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms to both the town and county official plan in this regard. Uh, as we heard from our second delegation, um, this this um, file has been a learning experience and and uh. Uh, county and town staff have been working very closely with with legal in this regard. Uh, to understand all the nuances of this request, and and we've we've certainly learned some new things here. Um, we would note, and and this is in the report, that should the committee of the whole defer making a decision today. Um, it's imperative that this decision be rendered here fairly shortly, uh, based on the existing lap state for the draft approval. And so the last uh, scheduled committee of the whole meeting prior to that December twelfth lap state would be December ninth. And then we also have a number of committed, another committee of the whole meeting on November the twenty-fifth. Um, as I noted, the developer has submitted an application for final registration of phase five, and and those clearances are supposed to come very shortly. Um, if uh, council were were not to make a decision and and the the uh, the matter were not to be uh, extended. Then it would have the the same effect as as a refusal in that regard, in that the development would lapse. And staff would say that, um. Or county legal staff have have identified some risks and concerns here if the draft plan extension is not granted. And and certainly, if if uh, if the committee of the whole would wish to hear from Mister Letturno here today, uh, we may need to go into closed sessions, closed session. And and certainly, if there is a thought that this might get refused and or deferred, uh, it might be worth hearing from Mister Letturno in closed session. Uh, just to get the full uh, legal picture beyond sort of the planning opinion I'm giving you here today. So with that, the staff recommendation is is that this report be received. Uh, and that the conditions be revised in accordance with the recommendations of of town and county staff in that regard. And that the lapsing date be extended to uh, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, so that's all I have at this time, but be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Count, uh, questions now from councillor, I believe councillor Desai. Has a question, did he? No? Uh, okay, it was about the appointed privilege, uh, councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Mister Warden, County Council, and to you, Scott. I guess my question is more directed to uh, representatives from the town of the mountains. Um, today, we've had two delegations speak here today, along with the planning report. Is your new information that you feel has been provided since your meeting at your council meeting in the sense of your decision in, is your. More new information here today, I guess I'm sure that through you, Mister Warden, to the representatives from the town of the mountains.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mister Warden, I can answer that, um. Certainly, um. What's in the planning report and and what's in the delegation's coverage to the various points of view, um. At the time of the decision at the town of Blue Mountains, um. I did, I was on the opposite side, but um. Since then, the only thing I've been able to determine is that the elevation of the grading plan from. the elevation of the grading plan from twenty-eight to twenty-twenty-one did not significantly change that the images in the planning report showing that the houses are not materially higher than what was originally proposed are very similar to what was originally proposed. What I have not been able to determine is what was promised to the people that bought in two thousand fifteen. And that does give me concern. Whatever I've been able to find in the records confirms what is in the staff report and what is in the delegation, the builder. But nobody, neither the builder, has not been able to provide me with information showing that the owners were advised that the houses would be higher. As you pointed out, councillor McQueen, there might have been a reasonable expectation that, since the land slopes were debated, that the land on the other side, you know, between the golf course, there would be some slope, but nobody's been able to confirm to me what was told the buyers. So they may very well be right, I don't know. But I haven't been able to find any documented evidence of what they were told. So, you know, that's all I can say. That those, I've done quite a bit of work on this file since the decision at our town council. And, you know, not been able to resolve that last one, but certainly, you know, the grading has not significantly changed between two thousand eight and two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
Scott, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I don't have anything further to add at this time, Mr. Warden.
Councillor McQueen, anything else?
Yeah, I just, I have a this goes back about twenty-four years ago when I first got on Osprey Township Council, and we had a subdivision where we, it was called Bruce's Lake. And we had a delegation, one of my first hot potatoes is first newly elected councillor. And the issue at the time, and I'll try to be very brief here, Mr. Warden, was at a certain time when that subdivision was built, a lot of the people that built certain size of homes, and then we had the slowdown of the recession of nineteen ninety-one, and then people started building smaller homes. And it came to our council as well, we thought there was a an agreement, in the subdivision agreement, that said you had to build a certain size. Went through it, researched it, could not find that information in the minimum size of a thousand square feet. And we had to stay with that because we couldn't find any information that said anything different to the subdivision agreement that was registered. So we had to go with what was being allowed through our zoning. So I use this as a sort of an example of that.
Thank you, Deputy Ward. Councillor Samson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the planning staff, is this development not part of a Common Elements Corporation or this particular component is, and were the original homeowners also part of a Common Element Corporation?
So through you, Mr. Warden. So this was approved as a planet condominium, and it was approved as a, go back to the slide here, as what's called a vacant land planet condominium. And it has been registered in phases, and I could be off on my numbers here. At the time, it was contemplated that there would be five separate condominium corporations, but that may or may not have changed now. I might have to actually defer to Reeds on that in terms of the exact model there.
My fault, then, Mr. Warden, was, is if that's the case, then any buyer in the phase that Ms. Logan is in would have had to have received a disclosure statement of some sort, which is usually a ream of documents that you've got to read that describes condominium, corporation itself, common elements, and any other related documents. Have we seen that document, or that series of documents? And would there be some of the information that my colleague, whoever, councillor, whoever is trying to pursue?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I've not personally seen those documents in terms of the condominium corporation declarations. If it's something that council directed us to, we could look to see if we could find those or work with Reeds to see if they're out there. But that's not a stage that county staff would typically get involved with in terms of the documents shared between seller and purchaser in that regard. But, yeah, if it's the direction of council, we could look into that.
Yeah, just a final comment, and it's whatever comment, then a follow-up question. See, that, I think that gets at the heart of the issue because Ms. Logan, in her statement, made the statement that she alleged that there is an error of omission. And that's her allegation. That may well be the case. If that's the case, then it does indicate to us, I think, potentially, that there may be a case here that we need to be concerned about as to what kind of information is disclosed to buyers, not only in this particular development, but others, as they relate to the information that county council and planning staff and town staff may have, but particular buyers may not have and are entitled to have. I think that's, if you peel back the onion, that's probably exactly the issue at hand. What was disclosed to these individual buyers? Was it consistent with what was approved? And if not, why not? It may well be. And it may well be that they were disclosed exactly what was in our files, which is the grading is essentially what it was in two thousand and sixteen, or whatever the date was, the original approval. It may not. And I think we need to know that answer.
Anything to add there, Scott?
Sorry, yeah, no, nothing at this time. Certainly, if it's the direction of council, we can look into that, but I don't have those documents at my fingertips by any means. I apologize.
Okay, any other questions before I call the question? Councillor Silver.
Mr. Warden, it was suggested in the staff presentation that we may well want to hear from the county solicitor. And I see that under item eight point two on the agenda, there is the advice of the solicitor with regard to this draft plan extension. And I would think that it would be prudent to hear from the solicitor before we make a decision. Because I don't see the point of having a closed session after we've made our decision.
My understanding is that the closed session is not necessarily to deal with this, but if your request is to have a closed meeting, certainly you can move that.
Yes, I would move that.
Thank you. Now I'm looking for a seconder. Seconded by councillor Robinson. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. So we will now go into closed session. I'll ask that our visitors just step out. Scott, Randy, Michael will remain. And Rob, right, of course. Okay. Thank you, Rob. We are back in open session. I'll make a declaration that we discussed only the items subject to solicitor's client privilege and everything else. Okay, so we're back in the main. I don't, we're still dealing with the items. Are there any further debate or questions before I call the question on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion before us? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, Scott. Thank you. Just one quick second. Thank you for your indulgence. I think we're going to break for lunch. I'm advised that lunch is now ready. So we'll adjourn. How long do we need, councillors, so that Scott has a sense of when we'll be coming back? It's now twelve thirty-six. If we said one fifteen, is that sufficient? Yes, I see a few nods. Okay, then we'll adjourn, and we'll come back at one fifteen, Scott. Thank you. Thank you very much. Calls back together. Hope everyone had a good lunch. Scott, good to see you. All right. We are now on to item seven B. I see Scott in place. Our official plan amendment eleven. I'm looking for a mover to put this item on the floor. Moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor Woodbury. Scott, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. So what we have before us is what we're calling a housekeeping amendment to the county official plan. And just by way of some background, the current county official plan, Recolor Gray, was approved in June of two thousand nineteen by the province. Later that year and into two thousand twenty, we undertook our first housekeeping matter and our first housekeeping amendment, sorry. And that was to address some minor changes to the plan that were missed in the creation of the plan. And that's quite normal after an official plan is adopted. Throughout later two thousand twenty and into two thousand twenty-one, the county worked with Hempson on a growth management strategy, an update to our growth management strategy. That document came before county council in July of two thousand twenty-one. And at that time, there was a staff report which directed staff to prepare an amendment to implement the new growth numbers from the growth management strategy, as well as to further address some housekeeping matters. So the purpose of this report, this presentation, really is to illustrate to council what housekeeping matters are being considered. Although the growth management piece is a part of this, those numbers haven't changed, and council was privy to those numbers in July of two thousand twenty-one. And those documents have been posted on our website. And we have had numerous requests from various public bodies and agencies that have started to use those numbers to look at their own needs as they move forward. And so official plan amendment number eleven is proposing to change the horizon of our county official plan from the current year, two thousand thirty-eight, which was supposed to be the end date, until two thousand forty-six, which represents the new twenty-five-year planning horizon that we're allowed to plan for through the two thousand twenty provincial policy statement. We also have a number of text and mapping changes, a few of which I'll just go through very briefly for you here now. With respect to the text changes in the plan, first and foremost, we are replacing tables one to four, which are the population residential unemployment growth numbers, so those will be using the new numbers. We are clarifying some density policies in our primary settlement areas across the county in terms of how municipalities may choose to implement those density policies as they go through their own municipal official plan updates in that regard. We are also, and you'll see this in the maps coming up, we're recognizing two future secondary plan areas that were identified through the Town of Hanover's conference review process. We're making some changes to the second unit policy. So these would be your accessory apartments, whether they be basement apartment or above a detached garage. There's been some rebranding at the provincial level. They're now called additional residential units. So we're making some changes there to clarify the policy and to implement some of the early direction from the county's Affordable Housing Task Force. We're also, in response to the presentation that was made both at county council and at the agricultural advisory committee, we're proposing some changes to the surplus farm dwelling severance policies with the goal of hoping to preserve more of those old barns across the county. We're clarifying some of the existing on-farm diversified use policies. So these are the policies that guide people when they're setting up a farm business. And we're also clarifying some of the policies around camping or what we're more appropriately calling it now, glamping facilities in that regard, glamorous camping, I'm told that means. We're looking to implement some early direction from the county's climate change action plan, knowing, of course, that once the climate change action plan comes before council in its final form, there could be further changes that are needed at that point. We're clarifying some policies as they relate to development and potential crossings around the county CP rail trail. We're clarifying some of the policies which relate to bedrock and shale resources across the county. Council may be more familiar with the aggregate resources that we've been dealing with for a number of years, but Recolor Gray, for the first time, implemented some bedrock and shale mapping. And so we've learned a few lessons already there, and so we're trying to clarify the policies. And we're adding some further definitions to the plan. And the one thing I neglected to mention at the very beginning of this presentation is, I'm the one making the presentation today, but this really was a team effort. Stephanie and Becky and Carolyn and Randy and I all put in a lot of work on this, from the mapping to the policy direction, to researching what others are doing. With respect to the maps, a number of the maps are being changed in about one of five categories. And so this first one is a sample map. This is just on the west end of Durham. And this is an instance where we're recognizing an existing industrial use. And there's not too many of these, but this is what I would call the former inner forest property just off Grey Road for west of Durham there. There's another one that never had any recognition in our county plan, which was the Chapman's Distribution Center on Highway ten. And so just to make sure if either of these facilities were ever come in for changes, that they have some recognition of what's built and been there for a number of years. Some of the other changes are being made to the inland lakes and shoreline designation. That's what you see in teal there, whereby there were some inland lakes and shoreline areas that were inadvertently missed in the mapping in the Recolor Gray official plan and ended up in the rural agricultural designation. As you can see, even just looking at the lot fabric there and the road network, you know, these clearly aren't agricultural parcels, they're homes and cottages. So we're just recognizing what's already there, not necessarily expanding it for new growth opportunities. This is the aforementioned changes in West Gray adjacent to the Town of Hanover with respect to two of the future development areas that they've identified through their comprehensive review process. Another change that we've looked at making is recognizing existing rural plans of subdivision in our aggregate mapping. So these are subdivisions that were approved many years ago, and in the current version of the plan are still showing that copper color on top of the residential lots. And the copper color there is to represent our high-quality sand and gravel resources. And we're simply recognizing through these changes that, you know, if someone came in for a minor variance on one of these lots for their existing home, they're not going to have to meet the tests of showing why we can't extract aggregate there. And the reason is obvious because they're already built upon. With respect to some of the other changes, we are recognizing existing approved pits and quarries. So a number of members of council may remember this particular one shown in purple there. This is the Bumstead Pit in Chatsworth. That was approved by the local appeal trib, local planning appeal tribunal. And so we're now formally recognizing it in the plan, simply what was approved. With respect to the shale and bedrock mapping, there were some instances where some of this mapping crept into the settlement areas. And what we thought we had done was sort of clipped out, if you can picture like a cookie cutter approach going into dough. We'd clipped out our settlement areas from the bedrock and shale areas. But what had happened was where there was hazard lands going through the settlement area, that same cookie cutter didn't apply to the hazard land. So we ended up with these long fingers following waterways of bedrock and shale. And again, we're simply recognizing that our settlement areas are set aside for growth. We're not viewing these as future quarries or extractive operations in that regard. And that was the shale mapping, and this is the bedrock mapping, just showing those areas along the waterfront of Georgian Bay where we have existing residential development. Again, we're not looking at those as future extraction areas, but the areas further into the hinterland, if you will, would still be recognized. And so with respect to what we're presenting today, this is the first step, so to speak. This is to introduce it to council. If council were to support the staff recommendation today, what would happen is we would post the proposed text and mapping changes on our county website. We would then notify groups and agencies and the public as per the Planning Act. With an amendment of this magnitude, it's not necessarily individuals, individual letters sent in the mail to all landowners. It would be ads in the newspaper and making people aware through our website and social media. We would proceed to schedule a public meeting, so the public could have their input in that regard. And of course, we would take any written comments as well. We've already got an existing meeting scheduled with our local municipal planners. And if the Committee of the Whole supports the recommendation today, that would certainly get added to that agenda on December the tenth. And then after all that public review and agency review, we'd have a look at what was being proposed and determine whether or not there's any further changes needed there. Maybe somebody has identified something that we've missed, or maybe somebody has identified some changes to the wording or mapping we proposed. And then we would wrap that all up and bring it in a final report with a policy analysis and staff recommendation back to the Committee of the Whole. And if they supported it, the bylaw would ultimately go on to county council for their consent. uh, back to the committee of the whole. And if they supported it, the bylaw would ultimately go on to county council for their consideration. Uh, so what's being recommended at this stage is, is that the, um, report be received and that staff be, uh, directed to undertake the regular process under the planning act, uh, to, to garner feedback on official plan amendment. Official plan amendment number eleven. So that's all I have at this time, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Scott. Are there any questions from council? Oh, councillor Swaber, go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, Scott, um, are, are the, um, local planners happy with these growth numbers or are, I understand there might be some concern with some of them being a little, uh, on the low side?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Um, so the, the local planners were involved in, in supplying data for the growth numbers. Um, we had some, especially as we were working through that process that raised concerns with the, uh, um, with the numbers that were being presented. Um, we did end up, uh, having a finalized version of that study. And, and there's been the clear, uh, direction to county staff. And, and we've shared that back with local staff is that these represent a snapshot in time and we're going to have to continue to monitor it. And what we flag is, is that the next major, uh, touch point, if you will, where we'll have to monitor this, uh, will be following, uh, receipt of the results of the twenty twenty-one census. And so we anticipate a review of these growth numbers coming, uh, in twenty twenty-three, once we have the full data sets in, in the census. So to, to get back to your question more directly, councillor Swaber, um, I, I wouldn't say we've, we've, um, gotten a broad round of applause for the numbers. Um, but I would say that, that, uh, there's a general acceptance that, that they're not too far off. And, and that things can change at any point in the future. We could, could hit and hit head into a recession or the current building boom could, uh, could continue. So we're going to continue to monitor those.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, close only counts in hand grenades. And there's something else too, isn't it? Yeah. Anyway, uh, my question is regarding the, uh, the notion of horseshoes, thank you, of, uh, including the old bank barn in, in with the, uh, the, uh, surplus farm dwelling. Is there, is that going to be an option? Or is that going to be, that's the way it is?
Thank you, councillor Mill. Through you, Mr. Warden. Um, that will be an option. And, and the reason it's, it's not a mandated, that's the way it is, is because in some cases that old bank barn is a significant distance away from, from the dwelling that sought to be severed. And so the direction from the provincial policy is, is that we keep those lots as small as possible. So we're, we're, we're stretching the rules a little bit by, by including those barns. But we think that where they're in, within a reasonable distance of the house, it does make sense to have them, uh, with the, the surplus dwelling, if they're still in, in good construction and decent shape in that regard. Ultimately, it will be a business decision of, of the farmer making the severance. Um, if they choose to keep that barn on the farm, or if they choose to tear the barn down or, or sell it with the house. Um, but the, the new proposed policies, and, and these were shared in very draft form with the agricultural advisory committee, would be that we could consider severing it with the house in, in some instances there.
I don't see anyone else. One, once, twice, gone. So I'll call the question now. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much, Scott. We're moving now to seven C, the employee assistance program. Need a mover, please? Moved by councillor Carlton, seconded by councillor Desai. And Sandra, oh, there you are. It's not good on me. You have the floor.
Good afternoon, members of county council. Um, at the October fourteen session of the committee of the whole, uh, council directed staff to bring back a report, uh, with some information for the employee assistance program or the AP program, offering it to members of county council. So in the report, you'll see the history of how EAP came to be for the staff groups, um, with Gray County. Um, it, it is a well-received, uh, program, uh, providing short-term support to our members when, when they need some support or some advice in various ways. We know a lot of our employees are glad to have it for their, their children who are going off to college and university. It's a way for them to get help without having to necessarily, uh, reach out to mom and dad if they don't want to. So there's a lot of, um, good things about this, uh, the program that the county offers. And in this, um, that you may know that county council are in the Omer's pension plan. And that's really the only benefit that councillors receive at the upper tier level, other than, um, accidental death and dismemberment if they are injured or killed in, as a result of performing their duties. Uh, the benefit itself is not expensive when you consider the value that it, it brings to our employees and their, their dependents. It's forty-eight dollars and sixty cents per year per insured member. And that includes their spouse and eligible dependent children. And the rate that's in effect right now is in place until the end of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from anyone? Also decide.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you, Warden Hicks. Um, I just wanted to, uh, express gratitude to staff for bringing forward this report. I know this was a, uh, a result from a notice motion that I presented a, a short while ago. So thank you for the quick turnaround, uh, to this, yeah, and to, to staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not see any other hands up. So with that said, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion before us? Any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you, Sandra. Okay, item seven D, uh, we're dealing with the provincial funding for childcare. I need a mover, please. Put it on the floor. Councillor Desai moves, seconded by councillor Columbus. Tara? You'll need to push your green button.
There we go. Thank you. Good afternoon, county council. Our report today is to, um, ensure council is aware of some funding pressures that are, we are looking at for the children's services department for twenty twenty-two and to seek some council direction. In twenty nineteen, the ministry of education announced changes to the early learning and childcare funding to be phased in over three years. In twenty twenty, there was a cost share requirement implemented of an eighty-twenty for our expansion funding that was voluntary. In phase two for twenty twenty-one, the cost share requirement was still voluntary. And there was a new cost share requirement of fifty-fifty for our ten percent admin allocation for expansion wage enhancement and our licensed home childcare funding. During that time, the province then announced a one-time transitional funding allocation to offset this cost, cost share requirement. So there was no levy impact. As we enter into phase three, the eighty-twenty cost share requirement for expansion is no longer a voluntary contribution, meaning that for every dollar spent twenty, twenty cents would be levy funding. There's also an additional reduction of our admin allocation from ten percent to five percent, which is also cost shared. I'd like you to note that our currently CMSMs have not yet received confirmation of the twenty twenty-two funding allocations. So the table on page four is based on our twenty twenty-one allocation. And we will provide an update when we receive further information. In twenty thirteen, um, the county received one-time mitigation funding to support the transition to a new funding formula. And those funds are currently being held in reserve. They can be used for eligible expenses over and above our allocation. But at this point, it cannot be used to offset levy cost share requirements. We are seeking council direction to request EDU, um, permission from EDU to use mitigation reserve to offset this municipal cost in hopes of reducing our levy impacting the twenty twenty-two budget. An additional funding pressure is within the early on budgets. In twenty seventeen, a variety of capital early on builds were approved for school-based projects. These are in various stages of completion throughout the county. There has not been a significant increase to early on budget since twenty eighteen, and this is resulting in some funding pressures related to higher rents from these larger spaces in the schools. The Hanover Early On Center is also originally, and sorry, originally a purpose built as a school, a childcare center in a residential area. As the building ages, it is not a cost effect, not cost effective to operate and would need a lift installed by twenty twenty-five to meet accessibility requirements. A pre-existing agreement with the province states the proceeds of the sale of the building in Hanover would revert to the province. Taking into consideration the significant financial investment the county has made into the building over the years, staff are seeking council direction to request an agreement from EDU that the building be sold and the proceeds would be reinvested into a new, more efficient early on location. Take any questions?
Thank you very much, Tara. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, then I will call the question on the motion to receive, to request approval from the ministry of education with respect to those mitigation, uh, that mitigation funds. And to request that letter of approval with respect to the sale of the early on facility in Hanover. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much, Tara. We're on to item seven E. Mary Lou and, oh, you're on deck, okay? Is Anne-Marie joining in on this? No, I see a head shaking, no. So, um, we're dealing with the Golden Town, uh, mortgage. I need a mover to put it on the floor. Moved by councillor Mill, seconded by councillor Desai. Mary Lou, you have the floor. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to call this one a good news story. We have the mortgage for Golden Town, which is one of the, the two mortgages that we, assumed when we took over the nonprofit in the fall of twenty eighteen. Uh, the first mortgage with CMHC was, is paid off. This last one renews on December first and has just over two million dollars remaining on the, the mortgage. And it was scheduled for fifty-nine months. Because it was with the province, the province went out for competitive rates. Um, People's Trust expressed an interest in the mortgage at three point eight percent. And staff have examined a few options. So the, the first would be to renew the mortgage with an external lender. And the rate on November second with infrastructure Ontario was one point nine seven percent. The existing mortgage has a one point nine nine five interest rate. So the, the payments would be very similar. We could self-finance it as we've done with several of our, uh, debts, including the addition to this building. And we could repay with an interest rate equivalent to the posted infrastructure Ontario rate when we have to make payment to Bank of Nova Scotia. This would receive, result in a similar budget repayment obligation and provide investment income that would be maybe a quarter of percent higher than what we could get on the posted five-year rate. The third option, which we're recommending, is we pay off the mortgage and we don't repay ourselves the interest. Instead, the proposed twenty twenty-two housing budget could be reduced by the amount that's in the twenty twenty-one budget, which is just under four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And over fifty-nine months at one point nine seven percent interest, that would decrease the investment income by just over a hundred and three thousand dollars. But it would provide a means of assisting in reducing the twenty twenty-two budget. And just in comparison, a one percent tax increase in twenty twenty-one is just over six hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. So if you compare the four hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred with the twenty twenty-one amount, that's a zero point seven percent reduction.
Great. Thank you very much, Mary Lou. And I would note that, uh, Anne-Marie is online. If anyone has questions of her as well. Are there any questions on this item? Councillor Sampson.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, I think the consensus these days is that rates are going up and not down. In fact, I keep hearing economists from the relative bank saying that, uh, we better see that, or I guess they'll go bankrupt. I'm not too sure what that message is, but since as though the rates are going up. I'm just wondering whether it'd be wise then to lock in at a long-term rate now, since when it's expecting yield curves to actually go back to normal profiles, pretty flat right now. Whether we wise to keep borrowing at the long-term rate and then reinvesting that cash in a much higher rate, um, over the next cycle, uh, rate increases, I'm hearing are coming early, uh, this, uh, neck, next year or mid next year. That's, i.e. in the Bank of Canada rate increases, et cetera. Just wondered if you can comment on that.
Through you, Mr. Warden. That's a great question. They've been predicting interest rate increases for quite some time. Every time we turn around, they say, oh, you know, in six months it's going up. And I'm hearing the same, that, you know, potentially we could hear of increases, um, mid next year. We certainly could take that approach. What it would result in is we would have an interest expense in the housing budget and we would be looking at that four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars being part of the housing budget for twenty twenty-two. So it's a question of whether you want us to go out and if we can self-finance even, borrow from ourselves, pay ourselves back, or use this money to reduce the, the budget for twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, councillor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Um, I can appreciate that we're trying to reduce the budget next year by zero point seven percent. My question is, would it not be more prudent to, uh, discharge the, the mortgage? And instead of reducing the budget by four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and six and four hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred dollars, would it not be prudent to move this money into a reserve? Similar to what the county did with Lee Manor, when Lee Manor was redeveloped and the, uh, the loan on that was paid off, the, there was a transfer made to reserve that was equivalent to the amount that was going towards the principal and the interest payments, if I recall correctly. Would that not be more prudent in the long run? Thank you.
You're correct. When the Lee Manor adventure was paid off, we transferred one million three hundred and sixty-one thousand annually to reserve. We are, as part of the proposed twenty twenty-two budget, looking at a one point two transfer to reserve for asset management purposes. So that's primarily in the transportation budget. We certainly can include that in the budget. What I will say is right now we have a number of budgetary pressures. That I, I will say it will be a larger increase than probably I can recall. So it depends if you want to do that now or you want to do that later. Certainly at some point we will need funds for housing. We do have the one percent that we have to find in the twenty twenty-two budget that currently is funded from the one-time funding reserve in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Lou, for that. Is the budget this year not one percent higher than what it should normally be? Because last year, county council voted to reduce the levy by one percent, by taking money from reserves to fund operations. So realistically, and I'm using this number as an example, if the budget was coming back to us at five percent, is the true cost not four percent because of that decision that was made last year? And so should we be allowing that decision to affect our decision today? Because we knew last year that we were going to be looking at an, at a one percent budget increase without doing anything. So should we really be letting that affect our decision? And more importantly, should we be letting short-term thinking affect long-term decisions? I want to clarify, that's not a question for Mary Lou. That is an unfair question to ask, really. That is a question for, for council as, in general. And, and yeah, sorry.
I don't see anyone with their hand up to answer, councillor Desai. So with that said, are there any other comments to be made? Councillor Desai?
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I will make an amendment that. That as a result of the mortgage being discharged and no expense required for principal and interest repayment, that the proposed, instead of, instead of the proposed net levy being reduced. That the $434,600 be added. As in addition to what we're already moving to the Affordable Housing Reserve.
My apologies, Rob. Thank you for that, do you mind? So it was, the motion was not supported, it was not seconded, so it failed. And we're now voting on the main motion, Councilor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And is it a fair statement to say that regardless of what we decide here today? When we get to the budget discussions, we could still. Do a couple of options, one being what Mr. Desai is suggesting. The other is exactly what is in the recommendation here today.
Through you, Mr. Warden. You will see a report on the December 9th Committee about where we're looking at for the proposed 2022 budget. At that time, if you wish, we could adjust the budget before it is presented to you on January 28th.
Thank you very much. I think we're ready to call, oh, Councilor Sampson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I'm just a bit worried that this is using capital to fund. An operating expense, and that's sort of the golden rule one should never trip across. We're using cash and investment. To basically. Lower an operating cost expense. And, and as I said, I think. From a funding perspective, it's probably not the wisest to do, so. Just wondering whether you would have a comp in, whether we've done that in the past before, and. Why would we do it in this particular case?
Through you, Mr. Warden. It does depend on. The budget. I will say that these are in the operating budget, the principal and interest repayments on all the housing debt. Not that it really matters whether it's in one budget or another, because it's in the combined budget. I can look at it a number of different ways. Probably in. A less pressured budget. We would look at transferring this to reserve for future use. I think housing probably has enough projects on their capital budget to do. In 2022, that they couldn't add more projects for their own buildings, simply because of COVID, and. They've had a, you couldn't do work internally in buildings, so they are behind, and there's some projects they didn't award because prices came in less than desirable.
Madam CAO? Sorry about that, Mary Lou, I cut you off. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mary Lou. Just to confirm to council, when do we have to confirm with the bank?
We have to provide payment on this loan by December 1st. So whether we, at any rate, we have to. Either self-finance and cut a check, or borrow from somewhere else.
Thank you. I'd also say that. To revisit this, this, this decision today, these, these minutes will go to November 25th. If we wanted to have a discussion about this matter again on December 9th, we would be doing that as a part of a reconsideration motion, I believe.
Okay, you're good, Councilor Sampson, Councilor Mill.
To be clear, Mr. Warden, I'm supportive of paying the, discharging the mortgage. I'm just saying that what we decide ultimately to do with that payment space can be decided when we debate the budget.
Thank you, point noted. Okay, I think we're ready to call the question. On Councilor Desai.
A point of clarity then on what the CAO and Councilor Mill had just said. Would it be more prudent to remove that last bit in that second clause? Regarding the effect on the proposed net levy altogether, so that it leaves our options open for December 9th. When we do get to it, instead of having it be a reconsideration.
For sure, we could do that as part of the, just remove that portion of the motion. Basically, what we need at this point is we need to. Pay Bank of Nova Scotia, the, just over $2 million. And if you'd like to look at. What room there is in the draft budget when you see December 9th, we can, we can certainly do that.
My apologies, I should turn on my sound. That would be an amendment. Are you moving that amendment, Councilor Desai? Okay, and it's seconded by Deputy Warden. Any discussion on the amendment? Then I'll call the question on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? Thank you, and all those opposed to the amendment? The amendment is carried. So now we will vote on the amended motion. Any discussion before I call that question? Seeing none, oh, Councilor McQueen.
I think just for clarity and for the viewing public, it doesn't mean it can't go there. We're just putting it on pause for now.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments before we vote? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? And those opposed? It is carried. Sorry, thank you, Mary Lou. Anne-Marie is on deck. We're going to be dealing with item 7F, the purchase of a building for transitional and supportive housing in Owen Sound. I need a mover to put this item on the floor. Moved by Councilor Keveney, seconded by Councilor Carlton, and I got it right this time. Okay. Anne-Marie, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This report in front of you is looking to purchase a building in order to enable the county to. Renovate the building for much-needed supportive housing. We know by our by-name list that we have about 36 people experiencing chronic homelessness in the area. And we are expecting more after our enumeration, more information on. On numbers and, and need. We also have community partners such as Gray Booth House Services and the Canadian Mental Health Association that have people on their waiting list in need of supportive housing. This would allow us to have a partnership in which the county provides the bricks and mortar and, and the ongoing. Maintenance and the ongoing property management. And then we would have our community partners provide supportive services. For people that are living there, so that there is supports and housing all in one place. It would also allow us to have a hub for people that would be in need of obtaining services. And also some office for staff, and depending on the needs. Would depend on what type of staffing is available. So we did identify some lands at 396 14th Street West in Owen Sound that we thought would be a suitable candidate. We hired Sultan Pion Consulting in order to do a site analysis. The, it is an ideal location as it is close to Salvation Army and other great county buildings. On, at the Affordable Housing Task Force on October 26th. Staff were directed to negotiate a conditional purchase of the building. And we were successful in negotiating a conditional agreement of purchase and sale. The agreement is conditional on satisfactory site and environmental investigations, and obviously county approval. We are looking at having GM plan complete the phase one and phase two environmental site assessment. As well, and also the necessary record of site condition. We've already been working with the Owen Sound Planning Department. And if all of the conditions are satisfied, then we would obtain title to the property on January 20th. And then happy to answer any question.
Thank you very much, Anne-Marie. Are there questions from council? At the same, really excited to see this one come to fruition. Okay, I think we're ready to call the question then. All those in favor of the motion as presented, is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Very much, Anne-Marie. Okay, so we're. One second. Thank you very much, Councilor. Whoever did pull item 6A. So we'll go back to that, capital purchase prior to budget approval. Councilor, do you mind moving it just to put it on the floor?
Yes, I'll move that.
Thank you. I'm now looking for a seconder. Seconded by Councilor Robinson. Councilor, whoever, you have the floor. You need to press your green button.
Yes, on this, um, capital purchase report refers to a number of projects, including the. Construction to Gray Road 13 pulverized and paved projects. And. I see we're approving them going out to tender. I'm just wanting to make sure that the tenders. Include the, the paved shoulders, those, those roads are part of the cycling and trails master plan. And we've actually had people stress concerns, there's quite heavy. Use of those roads for bicycle traffic and transportation, particularly during apple picking season, when we have a lot of. Foreign workers here, and a lot of them use bicycles as their main source of transport to come into town. And so the, our paved shoulders are typically pretty narrow. And Bill Abbott, who I'm sure most of you are familiar with, he's been very involved in the bicycling. Both with the county staff and our staff, and I think with me for staff as well, he's. He's, and they've used road counters and things like that put out on the road, so. He, he suggested that, you know, when we tender these things, we consider even wider paved shoulders than is typical. Up to 2.5 meters. A lot of that road has the platform. That would support a wider one. I don't know if it will support two and a half meters, but. It, you know, it is a fairly flat area. With on a, on a river sand plain, so it's not. It's not a challenging area in terms of platform width. So I just wanted to, to ask staff, you know, these pulverized and paved projects, as we're going out to tender rather quickly. Is there? Is there consideration of the paved shoulders and how wide they'll be? And I saw that the, this report was prepared in consultation with finance staff. But not the manager tourism, so I just wanted to make sure that the paved shoulders were considered.
Thank you. I see that Pat's on the line. Pat?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, all these projects on this list. Have paved shoulders, with the exception of the Gray Road 8 overlay. It wasn't identified as a route on the cycling and trails master plan. So that being said. I believe we are anticipating a 1.5-meter shoulder, or possibly 1.25. I haven't actually seen the design drawings on these yet. But I will go back to our staff and see. As per book 18, like a 1.5-meter paved shoulder is kind of the recommended. With, we try to reach 1.5 when we can. Again, we're, you know, with, with a few exceptions, some of the bigger projects in the next few years, we're going to start widening out some platforms, but. There aren't many roads in our system that we could have a 2.5-meter paved shoulder on, Gray Road 4, and the Green Bush Line would be another one, maybe, but. General, and a couple of spots on two, actually, for that matter, some strange ones there, it's wider than other areas, but. Typically, we try to gun for 1.5 meters. So that was kind of what we're anticipating, but I'll go back to our design staff and see how much room we have to go wider there.
Thank you, Councilor. So whatever, anything else? Okay, thank you. Councilor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So am I to understand that we do not. Pave shoulders unless it's identified on the cycling. Master plan?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, generally, that's what we've, that was kind of our goal, like transportation's biggest goal when we were doing the. Cycling and trails, that there's just some roads, whether it's because of. A lack of traffic in general. Or a lack of platform, there are a few, not very many, but there are a few that were identified. As not assigned route or not a cycling route, and those, we may possibly put a partially paved shoulder. Due to some, you know, trucks and the granular shoulder drop-off, just to kind of. Make the road just slightly wider, but Gray Road 8, for example, is not on our list of paved shoulders that we were going to do.
Well, I guess what I would suggest is that I would like to see. If not the one and a half meters, at least something on the shoulder of Gray Road 8, because. We do have an increasing population of. The horse and buggy community who use bicycles a lot. And they're expanding throughout the township of Southgate, if not the rest of the county. And I think there'd be a very good case to be made for a safety standpoint to have some widening of the paved shoulder. On Gray Road 8. So I wonder if you'd have another look at that, Pat, and. And consider that, please.
Yes, we can do that. Yeah, we'll have another look at it.
Councilor Sampson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I know if colleague I'm representing here today, we're here today, he would ask this question, so. Do we have a dig once policy, and if so, are we considering the laying of internet? Capacity conduit in these areas? Because these areas are typically, if you take a look at the map, areas where there's. Oh, an internet deficiency. To the point that some of them don't have anything. So it seems to me if we, if, I don't know whether the county does or does not have a dig once policy, but if we did. We should very seriously consider, to the extent we are digging up the roads to, to do any work, that we, or even on the side and the shoulders, we look at. At least laying conduit that would allow subsequent operators to come in and lay wire, so that the people who live along these roads. Can have the benefit of what the, a lot of us have, which is access to at least some internet capacity. So I'm just asking a question about whether or not we have a dig once policy here.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. We talked about this a lot a few years ago, you know, when Swift was getting started, and, and what was something we could do to prepare for the future? Generally, with those, kind of those long rural runs, we don't really want anything under the road anyway. We kind of like it, maybe a meter off the property line in the ditch, or, you know, on the backside of the slope kind of thing. And so it was one of those situations where it just wasn't economically feasible for us to do that, because we're not, you know, fiber designers for one. And it's just as easy for them to do it in the future. There's really nothing to be gained there, rural, really, especially. Now, the one thing I will add is, there has been a few urban jobs we've done since, like Dundalk, for example, where we have put some conduit at intersections, et cetera. Where we think it's going to run in the future. Again, not being designers and not being in charge of where fiber is running. It's hoped that investment isn't a waste of time. But that is our, is what we've been doing in some of the urbans, but rural, it's just as easy for someone to come in later and do it.
Thank you, Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just to add to Pat's comments, at the.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just to add to Pat's comments, at the time that we were part of the intelligent communities work, some of the background work that went into that. There was some extensive surveying done of the internet service providers, et cetera. They themselves at that time were not in favor of that. They each had their own particular requirements and it became clear that what one, but not another. We do have examples from other jurisdictions where they have made the investment to put it in place and it has not been used.
Thank you. Deputy Warden, Deputy Warden McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and kind of counsel. And going back to Counselor Mellon, I certainly support his endeavors to, not endeavors, but in the sense of looking at paved shoulders on Gray Road 8. I would say that Gray Road 31, I think, was one of the first roads that had a paved shoulder on it and, and viewing that road. And I see it's on for a lift here. I will say that, yes, it supports the cycling group, which I saw and I see a lot on that road. But it also supports, I see people walking and local people using that. But more importantly, I don't see the deterioration of the shoulder of the road. Because it carries that out, it keeps that salt that, that wet. Whatever you call, you know, those mild spells that deteriorates the edge of that road. And also I think you save on roadside grate, you know, hey, you do the shoulder with the grading because you do that tar, you seal that. So you save there. So certainly I'm a big believer of, of, of moving forward on our roads on that and just, I just think that there's so many benefits of doing that, that it, it just seems to be the right thing to do. And I thought we were, I thought we did have a direction that we all knew construct roads that we were doing paved shoulders, but I mean, we need to look at that policy. And I know there's certain roads, maybe you're limited, but I see so many benefits just from that first road being done. So I certainly support us looking at the kind of road eight and all the other roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I think, Pat, you want to add something?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, we'll go back and look at that again. And I think it's, it kind of, you benefit to all counselors to have a look at the roads where we have paved the shoulder. And we really, I mean, we, we had written it in our original report that, you know, decreases the cracking if the cracking starts on the outside edge and kind of migrates into the lane. But it actually, if you look at some of the roads where we've paved the shoulder, the lack of cracking is really almost shocking how well that white line holds up. So it's hard for us to quantify exactly how much longer these, you know, roads are going to last than if we didn't do it. But there's definitely some cost savings there in between the grandiose shouldering and the manpower and the fuel and. So yeah, we should look at the gray rate again and, and have another look at that.
Deputy Warden?
Just to follow up, this morning on the way up here just today, coming up Gray Road 13 and seven, I was on seven. And there was a work van in front of me and we met some vehicles and all of a sudden everything slowed down. And there was an individual that was cycling on the road. But that person, because it's not a paved shoulder area, it slowed down the traffic. Had there been a paved shoulder, I think there's a lot of safety issues around that as well, that there's a place for that individual to be. Because, you know, it's this person was cycling a little bit up on an incline and it's hard enough to cycle on an incline, but being in a gravelled area and stuff like that. So I see so many safety parts of that as well.
Thank you for that. Before I go to you, Counselor Silver, Counselor Sampson, did I cut you off by chance? No, I didn't. Okay, Counselor Silver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So we're, I'm hearing from staff that the, there's no benefit to putting the conduit in. And yet the region of Durham seems to have found out that their dig once policy will reduce the cost of broadband deployment. And they're, they're talking here that they can account that the cost of digging up and restoring municipal rights away can account for 60 to 80% of the overall cost. Well, and they, they, they have implemented a dig once policy and then on a case by case basis, the region of Durham evaluates where future fiber optic may be needed and then places the conduit during road construction and reconstruction. And, you know, it's, the conduit is reserved for future use. We've consulted with our rabbit task force with a number of people who build networks and, and service providers and a properly laid in and constructed conduit is fairly cheap because the big cost, as it points out here, 60 to 80% of the cost is the digging and repairing. And so I don't know, I don't, my question to staff is what does the region of Durham know that we don't know?
Madam CIO? You're, I think you're muted.
I apologize. Certainly if it's council's wish, we can look into this further. I don't know that the conditions in Gray County are a mirror of, of what might be occurring in, in Durham with regard to population density and the rural nature of, of our roads. The fact that there are a number of funding programs taking place right now and, and multiple, multiple service providers moving into that space. I think that also has an impact. As I say, the information that, that we were using is a few years old now. And so if there's a, if council feels it's advisable, we can certainly take another look. We also know that, given the nature of Gray County, it's not always easy digging. And there are, you know, there's a lot of fiber that's on poles because it can't be buried. So I'm, I'm totally open to direction from the council this afternoon. No, thank you.
Thank you, Madam CIO. We may also, I know I'm speaking out of turn and I apologize, but we may want to wait and, and fully see what the province's plan is because there's a pretty big broadband expansion project on the go or in the works right now by the province. So that is a factor we should probably consider as well. Are there other comments to be made? Deputy Warden?
So just for clarity to the members of the mountains or who's racing this, are we talking about just putting a conduit in that you blow the wire in later? Is that what your, your idea is? It's just sorry, you put the plastic piping in and what size that looks like or whatever. I guess you could get a cost per meter or whatever, or maybe there is a costing on that. I don't know. And you could come back to county council on that. Even tried in a certain section of road that you think it's going to be a probability. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, it's kind of a standalone thing, like in a rural, like I said, we, the information at the time, we didn't know, we don't know how to design fiber networks. And it really, since it's not in the road, like in urban, I can sort of see it because, you know, you, you've kind of got the road dug up for water main and sanitary, et cetera. But in a rural, you're not even working in the same area. You're out near the fence line somewhere typically is where we allow them to put fiber. So it's hard to just envision, you know, any economy of scale and doing that at the same time. Yeah. So I mean, we can, we can go back, as Kim said, to the, if the committee wishes and see what the fiber providers say now. But at the time, it was just kind of us doing work that we have never done. And, you know, worst case scenario, you put all this fiber and nobody ever uses any of it. I don't know. And that's hard to kind of justify too. So whatever the committee would prefer.
Thank you, sir. Anything further, Deputy Warden? Thank you. I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to say it's time to call the question. All those in favor of the motion before you? And all those opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. We are now going to go to item number eight, which is a closed meeting matter. And we're going to be proposing to meet in closed session to deal with the security of the property. If you enter section 2392 of the Municipal Act, I need a mover. It's into closed session moved by Counselor Mellon, seconded by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? Are there any opposed that is carried? So we'll take a short break. I'm going to suggest maybe five minutes. So come back at 20 minutes past. We shouldn't, oh, my goodness. Okay, we should not take a break. I'm being told. I should have done that before. Thanks, Rob. We're now back in open session. And I would just make a declaration that we dealt only with the item on the agenda for close meeting, which was an item related to security of the property. Counsel, that now brings us to item number nine. Is there any other business? Counselor, so whatever.
Just, just a quick question of Randy. Several months ago, we, we passed the motion that there would be a report coming on the county delegation of planning. So today, as we were talking about the cottages of Lower Bay and the different roles of county and the town on this file and the fact that, you know, we had to come back here for, for the approval of the extension. I'm just wondering, where are we with the report on the county delegation of planning?
That's through you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the council, or the question, Counselor Silver. Unfortunately, the project has been delayed just due to staff shortages earlier this year and we're now also back into staff shortages. And so that project has been delayed based on some other priorities and other projects. We're still hoping to bring that forward within, over the next couple of months. We were initially planning to bring that forward, hopefully in November, but that again has been delayed to current staff shortages. So we're probably looking at early in the new year at this stage in terms of bringing that report back for council's consideration.
Thank you. We'd be happy to help with the staff shortage shortages if you delegate some of that stuff. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Counsel, at our last meeting, we approved two delegations to go forward to the Roma Conference joint with Bruce County for community safety and well-being funding and also with regard to the childcare resourcing situation. I wanted to ask you if you would be willing to support two additional delegations from Gray County. One with the Ministry of Health, which would request expedited access to the provincial CRIS program, program, which is stands for client health and related information. That system would provide a secure and accessible place for service providers beyond our paramedics to input notes on patient electronic medical records. And the reason why we're interested in that relates to the current cares health, health outreach that's happening in Hanover and Owen Sound. So when we have additional service providers with our paramedics on site and helping that vulnerable population, at the present time, there's not access for those folks to be able to track the information regarding the visits. And we believe that that would be both efficient and more effective for, for everyone. So we'd like to talk to the province about that. The second one is a delegation that we would propose with the Minister of Energy. As Counselor Body spoke, I think a couple of weeks ago, recently, we had the opportunity to visit with Hydrogen Optimized, which is a new and leading edged company in the old Tenneco facility here in Owen Sound. We're doing some really exciting work. One of the things that they asked was if there could be consideration of some sort of a demonstration site for hydrogen utilization at their facility. We'd just like to use this delegation as a way to signal to the province that we are interested and supportive of something like that, should the opportunity be provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CIO. Okay, any other, other business? I'm, I'm being advised that we should probably get a mover and seconder to authorize the CEO to entertain those delegations moved by Counselor Mellon, seconded by Counselor Hutchison. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thanks.
Thank you.
Scott, did you have a question or you were voting?
No, I was voting, Mr. Warden.
Okay, perfect. So any other, other business? Seeing none, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor DeSai, seconded by Deputy Warden McQueen. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, folks. Thanks, Scott.